So that works, we can just send you away and you go? Is that how it works?
It's five twenty now, if we could, I'd like to bring this meeting to order.
I've warned them about the foundation.
This is the April twelfth, two thousand twelve, meeting of the Jefferson City Planning and Zoning Commission. My name is Chris Jordan, I am the Vice Chairman, and will be chairing the meeting tonight. I think first of all, we will have the members introduce themselves, starting with our Council Liaison.
Good evening, my name's Sean Schulte, City Council Liaison.
Mike Lester.
Bonnie Tricky Cotton.
Bob George.
Dave Non.
Anne Sroppin.
Dale Vaughn.
Dean DeToye.
Scott Stacey.
Eric Baron.
Janice McMillan.
Drew Hilper.
Thank you, everybody. City Code authorizes nine regular members and three alternates. Alternates are designated to vote upon absence or disqualification of any regular member. A quorum of five members or alternates is necessary to conduct business. And do we have a quorum tonight?
Yes, we do.
Okay, we do have a quorum. The following regular members are absent. You want to read that out for me?
Jack Deacon, Chris Sharnell, and Rob Kepin.
Okay. Are there any members who will be disqualifying from voting on any agenda item? Seeing none. I will, at this time, disclose, I'm assuming we have someone here to speak on this request, but for case number P twelve zero zero five, a rezoning plan on Hoover Road, the membership of Double Vision Enterprises does include a member of my family, Jim Jordan, who is my uncle. I do not have any financial interest in this property, and I will not be disqualifying myself. Voting members are as follows: Jack Deacon, Dean DeToye, Bob George, Michael Lester, David Non, Scott Stacey, Chris Sharnell is not here tonight.
Correct.
Okay, Bonnie Tricky Cotton, Dale Vaughn, and myself, upon a tie or something to that effect. Now we'll call to see who is present for the following cases. Case number P twelve zero zero four, that is a rezoning on South Ten Mile Drive. I believe we do have Mr. Gratz here to speak on that tonight, okay? Who do we have present for case P twelve zero zero five, the three hundred block of Hoover Road, Central Missouri Professional Services? Thank you. Do we have any requests for continuance on either of the cases? Seeing none. The format of the hearing, I will let Eric introduce the format of the hearing and the order of testimony.
Thank you. I would like to briefly describe the procedures of the Planning Commission. The proceedings of the meeting are being recorded, so I ask that when you speak, please step to the microphone and give your name and address for the record. After a brief introduction by city staff, the applicant and applicants' consultants and advisors will explain the project. The opening presentation shall be limited to ten minutes. Applicants shall be given three additional minutes for closing testimony if so requested. We will then ask to hear from supporters of the request. We will then ask to hear from any opponents of the request. We will then ask to hear from anyone else who wishes to speak on the request. And the testimony from supporters, opponents, or other interested parties shall be limited to three minutes. Rebuttal testimony shall be limited to five minutes unless additional time is granted by the Commission. City staff will then describe the proposal and make their recommendations on the request. In order to reduce the time necessary to hear an application, reference to printed material, including the staff reports, applicable findings, ordinances, and/or statutes shall not be read into the record unless directed by the Commission. And the staff reports and recommendations, if any, on the matter before the Commission shall be presented to the Commission before the Commission acts on the matter. The Commission will then close testimony from the floor, and prior to motion or discussion on the case, the Commission will discuss the proposal and publicly make its determination with reasons. The form of the motion shall be positive, that is, the motion shall be made to accept the request as presented or with modifications, stipulations, or conditions. And a final vote will then be taken, ayes in favor, nays opposed. And the Chairman shall announce the results of the vote, specifying the number of votes cast in favor and the number of votes cast against. And the following documents are entered as exhibits for all items under consideration at this meeting: the City Code, as amended, the comprehensive plan and land use map, copies of applications under consideration, a list of property owners to whom notices present, the affidavit of publication of public notice in the newspaper, copies of drawings, plans, and/or renderings under consideration, letters or memoranda from staff, the staff reports, minutes of proceedings, letters, photos, memoranda, or other materials submitted by the public or the applicant, and the rules of procedure for the Jefferson City, Missouri Planning and Zoning Commission. And these items are public record and are available for inspection in the Department of Planning and Protective Services or through the Office of the City Clerk.
Next we'll have the adoption of the agenda. Can I have a motion to adopt tonight's agenda as printed?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next we'll need approval of the minutes from last month. I'm assuming that everyone's had a chance to kind of read through those.
I'd move, we approve the minutes as presented.
I second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Staff has indicated that we have no correspondence this evening on either of the case?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. All right, we will move along to the first case tonight, case number P one-two-zero-zero-four, twenty-eight-twenty-seven, South Ten Mile Drive, a rezoning from RS-one to C-dash-one. Eric, if you would, give us the staff report and information on this.
Thank you. First, to orient you to the location of this property, up on the screen is a map of the area, including zoning map. You'll see toward the top of the screen is the intersection of Missouri Boulevard and Stone Ridge Parkway. Just off the screen to the right is the Coles Department Store. And South Ten Mile Drive is this road, right here. And the property is a house, essentially the third building on the left down South Ten Mile Drive. It is currently zoned RS-one, single-family residential, and currently in use as a single-family residential house. The property is owned by the same individual that owns the C-one zoned property that I'm pointing at here, which is in use as a real estate office. And that is the applicant for tonight's case. William and Nancy Gratz are the property owners. The purpose of their request is to rezone the property for potential future commercial redevelopment. The property would be paired up with the real estate property in order to provide a single developable track. This area is located within the South Ten Mile Drive Kimborg Hills neighborhood. There is a neighborhood plan that was adopted as a component of the comprehensive plan back in two thousand and ten. And that plan essentially called for, or supported, commercial rezonings in this area if certain criteria were met. Within the staff report are the four separate criteria. There are also responses to the criteria that were provided by the applicant, and are briefly addressed within the staff report. The four criteria are essentially that the property is adjacent to an existing commercial use, that the proposed rezoning consists of a minimum of a half acre, that the rezoning is to C-one zone, and that a reasonable plan to develop the property as a commercial use has been developed. Essentially, all those criteria are met, although the last one, in lieu of an actual plan being developed, it's recognized that there's sufficient area to address the items that would need to be addressed within a plan, specifically items such as buffer yards, parking, driveway access, et cetera. Up on the screen is an aerial photo, two thousand and eleven air photo of the property. The house is highlighted. The real estate office that is next door, that is essentially paired up with this application, does have an existing parking lot and existing drive access. And then I do have one photo of the property, which is kind of dark, but, as I said, it is in use as a residential house. With that, I'd be happy to answer any initial questions, but I think that's all I have for now.
Thank you, Eric. Do any of the Commissioners have a question for staff at this point? Seeing none, Mr. Gratz, if you'd like to come up this evening and give your presentation.
For the record, Bill Gratz, the twenty-three-fifteen Route M, Jefferson City, Missouri. We're just here to request a continuation of zoning to the neighboring property to make our property larger, more usable for future C-one use. It meets all the criteria of the Neighborhood Development Plan. Present, we have a young couple that's renting it. The house, it'll be used as a single-family rental house until such time the entire property is developed to C-one. Have any questions, I'll answer them.
No questions from the Commission? Thank you, Mr. Gratz. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this request? Seeing none. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of this request? Seeing none. Seeing that, we will close testimony. And Eric, I will let you give your staff report.
Again, the four criteria are all met. The property is adjacent to an existing commercial use. The property, when combined with that adjacent property, consists of one-point-three acres, which exceeds the half-acre minimum. The rezoning is proposed to a C-one district, and there is sufficient space to meet the requirements of the zoning code on the property. The staff recommendation is for approval of the rezoning request. The recommended form of motion is for approval of the request to rezone the property from RS-one to C-one. Be happy to answer any questions.
How does that affect the tenants? If it's rezoned to C-one, they're still allowed to live there because it's grandfathered in, or?
Yes, they are allowed to live there. The house would be grandfathered in. If for any reason the house were to burn, then there are certain protections that would allow it to be rebuilt within the commercial zoning as a non-conforming use. If for any reason the house was demolished voluntarily, it could not be rebuilt as it's would be sitting on commercially zoned property.
If those tenants move out, can new tenants move in?
Yes, certainly.
Any other questions for staff this evening regarding this case? Okay, seeing none, would someone like to make a motion on this request?
Move to approve the request to rezone the property from RS-one to C-one.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion regarding this case? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Gratz, I will let you know that this body does forward all of its recommendations to the City Council, and obviously, city staff will be letting you know about the dates for that. Okay, thank you. All right. The next case is P one-two-zero-zero-five, the three hundred block of Hoover Road, a rezoning from RA-dash-two to PUD, and a preliminary PUD plan. Eric, will you give us a report on that?
Certainly, thank you. First, to orient you to the location of the request, up on the screen is a map of the area with the zoning shown. You'll notice Highway one-seventy-nine going through the middle of the map, and Truman Boulevard and Industrial Drive, the intersection of Industrial and Highway one-seventy-nine or Truman Boulevard, I think it's actually got four different names if you continue south, is located there at the bottom of the screen. You'll notice West Main Street is kind of toward the bottom of the screen as well, and Hoover Road, which comes off of West Main Street and ends in a cul-de-sac right at the southern portion of the subject property. The property is part of the former Cherry Creek condominium development. That particular development consisted of a large number of multi-unit apartment buildings, is a development plan that has been abandoned, and the property has essentially been split into two separate ownerships. With the northern portion of the ownership of the property owners are essentially continuing with a development plan for apartments. And then the southern portion of the, again, the old Cherry Creek condominium development is the subject property. Consists of about eight-point-five acres, and is solely accessed off of Hoover Road. That is the only access to the property at the Hoover Road cul-de-sac. The proposal is, comes in two parts. It's a rezoning proposal and a preliminary PUD plan, rezoning from RA-two to PUD in order to support the PUD plan. I have an aerial photo of the property. You see, it's mostly undeveloped. There is an existing building located on the southwest corner of the property, was intended to be a maintenance building for the development. It is a part of the PUD plan. And also have a picture of the PUD plan. That is the complete document. I have a blow-up, it's a little bit easier to see. The north is to the left, so, but in the lower right-hand corner of the plan is the maintenance building, the existing maintenance building. Let me address a few components of this PUD plan. It is probably best thought of as an apartment complex, even though it's mostly duplexes and, well, it is duplexes and triplexes that are shown on the plan. It is all private driveways, so these are not intended to be public streets and would not be maintained by the city. So each of these streets, so to speak, on this plan are all private driveways. And again, there's duplexes and triplexes shown coming off of those driveways. The plan essentially shows ten duplexes and eleven triplexes on the property. There is an existing, again, the existing maintenance building is intended to be a future community building, and then one residential unit. If you look where my pointer is, right there, one unit is intended to serve as a future maintenance or office building to serve the development. The development is pretty much targeted toward retirees or senior living. Would include a number of amenities, including gated access, curbside trash collection, streetlights, landscaping, and interior and exterior maintenance. Again, it's essentially an apartment complex, except with individual units being rented rather than units in a multi, in an apartment-style setting. The maximum density that's outlined in the plan is sixty-two units. There are not sixty-two units shown on the plan. Within the text of the plan is the ability to substitute triplexes for a pair of duplexes. The thought being that depending on how the development progresses and how their customers, what their customers demand essentially, they may substitute out a triplex for two duplexes or vice versa. So they'd like to retain a little bit of flexibility in that regard. But with a maximum of sixty-two units over the eight-point-five acre site, it's proposed in an underlying zoning district of RA-two. The building exteriors within the development plan are identified as brick on the front and brick and concrete board siding on the sides and the rear. There is a landscaping component of the plan with a minimum of one tree planted adjacent to each building. You'll see a number of trees shown on the plan. In consultation with the developers, it was mentioned that more than likely, they would provide more landscaping than that, but this would be the minimum as proposed by the plan. There is a sidewalk network shown on the plan. And as far as parking goes, each residential unit would have an attached one-car driveway, one-car garage, plus a driveway, so essentially room for two cars. Plus, there are parking spaces shown at the ends of some of the streets, along some of the driveways, parallel parking along some of the driveways, and then a larger parking lot next to the community building. I do have a couple pictures of the property. Again, it's an undeveloped site. This is a picture sitting from the Hoover Road cul-de-sac looking north. And a picture of the existing community building. And I believe that's all I have for now. I'd be happy to answer any initial questions.
Do any of the Commissioners have questions for staff at this point? Seeing none, we will ask the applicant to come up and fill us in if there's anything else to be filled in. Please state your name and address for the report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chamberlain. My name is Paul Sampson. I'm with Central Missouri Professional Services, twenty-five-hundred East McCarty Street. Eric has done a very, very good job of filling you in on the majority of the details about the development. Again, the area's been abandoned for several years, and the Jordan group has purchased the property just within the last few months, so they're excited to get going in eliminating a NYSOR in the community. The previous development plan originally called for a hundred-and-forty-eight units within this eight-point-five acres. They were all going to be in four-story apartment buildings and two-story townhomes. Again, we're down to a maximum of sixty-two units with this development plan. The reduction in units allows for increased green space, reduced traffic on Hoover Road and on West Main Street, a reduced stormwater runoff, and numerous other benefits to the community. A little bit more about the units themselves, each unit's going to be approximately eleven-hundred square feet, two-bedroom, two-bath units. Each will have its own single-car garage, exterior patios. Some of the units, most likely along the east side of the property, which will be on the upper side of the sheet that's being shown, those will potentially have walkout basement availability. Exteriors will all be maintenance-free, brick and concrete siding. Again, the units will be available for lease, so the entire property will be owned and maintained by a single ownership group. That ownership group will take care of all the maintenance. They'll be providing curbside trash pickup for being deposited at a single location on the site where the trash company will then come and pick it up. It'll reduce the trash vehicles through the neighborhood and save on wear and tear on their streets. All the infrastructure in the development is readily available. The main infrastructure extension that'll have to be done is a sanitary sewer along the east side of the property. It'll be extended along the entire length of the property to the south end. And the benefit of that is that there's an existing pump station that's on the property just to the south. The extension of that public sanitary sewer main will allow the adjacent property owner to eliminate that private pump station, as well as extending public sewer to the maintenance building, which is a separate standalone lot. So that'll fix a problem that's been there for some time. Storm sewer systems in the development, the east side of development will all be collected in private storm sewer systems, and it'll be discharged at the east property line. Again, that was the plan with the original development. Advantage here is that we've got a reduced number of units, reduced stormwater going to the adjacent properties. The development on the west side of the development will go into the public storm sewer system that runs north and south of Hoover Road, and then that ultimately goes to the detention basin that's located at the far northwest corner of the original Cherry Creek development. That's really the nuts and bolts of it. Again, the owners are happy to be doing this project and eliminating a NYSOR in the community. Mr. Jim Jordan is here, if you've got any specific questions for him, and I'll be happy to answer any questions as well.
Do any of the Commissioners have a question for either one of the gentlemen here this evening?
This'll be Jeff City's first gated community, right?
I think so, yes.
Any other questions?
Yes. The, as far as the gated community goes, there's, I'm assuming there's procedures in place for access for taxis that people may call, or ambulance access to the?
Yeah, the owners are kind of in the middle of investigating the best method of accommodating that. I mean, it's not the first gated community that's been done anywhere, so it's just a matter of doing some research and finding systems that are, you know, I assume that most of this comes out-of-the-box type systems that will accommodate fire, police, deliveries, and those type of things.
And the streets are gated, but there's no fencing?
Correct.
Correct.
It's just vehicular gates.
Okay. And then the one last question is, the amount of sidewalks, it seems like you stopped just short of having the, you know, like a good pedestrian plan here, especially along that east, that east row. Is that something you would consider as to?
Well, the main reason the sidewalks are situated the way that they are is that, you know, the goal was to have sidewalks on one side of the street everywhere, which there's probably ninety-nine percent of that that accomplishes that. There may be a couple of instances where it looks like over by the maintenance building, maybe we don't have sidewalk along that part of the street. The reason the sidewalks are located where they are is that we're also providing some on-street parking. I think we've got around thirty-plus spaces of parking on-street, and that will provide space for any visitors of the residents to have places to park for, you know, other than the garage space and the driveway space, it'll be available for each unit. That way, you've got parking for visitors and things like that, so the sidewalks have been placed adjacent to those on-street parking spaces.
Yeah, it seems to meet the requirement for the underlying zoning, you know, as far as like the number of sidewalks. You know, for what it's worth, it would just be my suggestion for the quality of life for the people that would be living there. I presume you're looking for older clientele and that, that, you know, would, you know, of an evening would want to walk or something, that they have, that they have a better pedestrian system there, but that's just a suggestion.
Right, and like I said, the plan is, if you want to call it minimalistic in the fact that it, to show that it meets the requirements, but the owners have verbalized to me that, you know, it's real easy to add stuff in after the fact, do more than what's required. And, you know, with the type of development they're wanting to put in, they want it to be nice for the residents. They, you know, you know, maintenance-free bricks, concrete siding, exteriors, extensive landscaping, you know, things like that, they want it to be a nice development. I wouldn't guarantee that the sidewalks that are shown on the plan are the only sidewalks that would be built.
And Paul, there is a sidewalk connection, correct, to the?
Right, on the, on the, the sidewalks connect to existing system, both on the south side to the Hoover Road cul-de-sac, and the system does extend through the development up to the northwest corner, which basically would temporarily dead-end at the adjacent property with plans that as that next property is developed, that sidewalk system would get extended to go to the end of the Cherry Creek Court cul-de-sac off of one-seventy-nine. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicants this evening? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone present who would like to speak in favor of this request? Seeing none. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this request? Seeing none. Seeing none. We will now close testimony on this case, and we will let staff, uh, give us their staff report. Eric?
Thank you. I believe that there's a, an engineering item of concern, uh, plus Shane has a staff report to go over as well, correct?
Uh, briefly, uh, I'll go over my staff report. Uh, Paul did a pretty good job of covering over the, the infrastructure and improvements that are proposed with the, the development, uh, in regard to stormwater. As, as he had indicated, the, um, the impact would be less than what was previously, uh, proposed and approved on the, the, uh, apartment and condominium plan. Majority of the west portion of the property would, uh, be tied into the, uh, main storm sewer that, uh, traverses the property from the north and the south from Hoover Road. Uh, and then the remainder would then drain to the east, uh, to the cemetery property, all being considered as far as, um, with, uh, the original development, as far as the detention, uh, basin that was built on a regional basis to the north, uh, for the, uh, that the city ma- uh, has obtained. As far as sanitary sewer, it's, uh, again, proposed to serve the, the, the property and be extended from the north, uh, from the, uh, from the north and then all the way to the portion of the south property. Sidewalk, as we had just indicated, um, would be extended to the north for possible future extension to Ch- Cherry Creek Court, and then also ties to Hoover Road. Uh, street access and traffic impact, uh, a previous impact study had been provided. And again, as Paul had indicated, that would be less, uh, with this proposal than what, uh, what had, what was appro- approved and proposed originally. Uh, as far as utilities and streetlights, fire hydrants, uh, additional, um, lighting and hydrants are being proposed in accordance with our standards as far as the city, uh, standards go. Back on the stormwater, uh, we would request that, um, we're working with the property owner to the north. In the previous development, uh, we did find that, uh, some of the infrastructure was not accepted yet, uh, by the city, and so, uh, we would like to work with the owner to investigate the, um, the, uh, main storm sewer to make sure that there's no other items that need to be done and go ahead and try to get that system accepted as a city system. Uh, we wanna make sure that it's clean of any debris, uh, since the, uh, development did, uh, was kinda left, uh, unfinished, uh, to ensure that, uh, what we have there is, is something that meets our city standards. Uh, that would be the only, uh, comment that I would have as far as us being a item of subject to, uh, recommendation of our approval.
Shane, regarding that, uh, issue of the, uh, maintenance on the, uh, existing systems, is that something that you guys will coordinate with, with both owners? And the, the city will send out staff to check that, to make sure it meets our requirements?
What we've done on the north property is actually tried to go down in and try to TV that. What we would suspect would be possibly some, uh, some forms that may be left over, um, minor offsets in the pipe. If necessary, we, we really couldn't tell on the north property when we went down in to, um, be able to determine. We couldn't get it, through it completely. There was quite a bit of debris in the pipe on down, on the downstream side of this pipe. So, uh, what we would look to try to do is get into the pipe, take a look at it, see what's ev- what we could do, and then if we could work to try to get the owner to, if we could get that cleaned up so that, uh, it would be an acceptable form, then we could go ahead and take that over as, as being accepted into the city system.
I have a question on that, please.
Sure.
That's so-called catch basin or whatever the, right? Okay, does a stormwater, explain to me, is a stormwater, does that collect the stormwater?
You're talking about the city's property to the north that's over by one-seventy-nine? Is that what you're referring to?
The one, the, the one that, yeah.
Right. Uh, that was, that was originally laid out with the subdivision, and it, uh, not only serves this development, but it serves the entire watershed that's down to that point, all the way up to West Main Street and, uh, Truman Boulevard, that area. Uh, so, um, it would serve this area, and the city actually ended up with that piece of property in negotiations with the original development of this, this subdivision.
Well, okay, the other question I have is, uh, since, since Jim's gonna be pouring a lot of concrete and up, what have you up here, there's gonna be a lot more surface water heading that direction, it seems to me. Uh, is that gonna be a mosquito problem? I guess that's the purpose, what it was built for, to collect that stormwater, right?
That's correct. Um, in the, in the construction of, of the development, um, there were things that were put in place down at the, the basin to, uh, capture any kind of erosion and sediment control down on that portion of it. Uh, those were meant to be temporary, they're still in place. Um, there would be additional, uh, items that would be added to the final plan on this portion of the development that would try to keep a lot of that out of the system to begin with and make sure it doesn't get into there. And so, uh, we'd be looking at that closer with the final, final layout of this plan. And also, uh, if anything needs to be done with the basin down there, that would be something that we'd have to...
And that would be, basically, that would be the city's obligation to, to remedy this problem rather than the builder, right?
Not necessarily. I mean, I guess if, uh, if it's, if it's the basin, the ba- the basin's been accepted by the city, that part is the, the city's property down there. So, uh, we would hope to get all the, uh, uh, measures in place on this so that, that we wouldn't have to have the pipe cleaned back out again or that there wouldn't be any of the sediment or erosion that would be getting into the system. What I do in terms of the final plan is look at, uh, erosion, sediment control, silt fence, rock checks, things of that sort, to make sure those are put in place with this plan so that that all doesn't end up either over on the cemetery property or down into the pipe again, so, or in the detention basin, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Shane at this point? Eric, I'm assuming you have something you'd like to report for us?
Uh, just very briefly, staff does recommend approval of the rezoning and preliminary PUD plan request. Uh, the form of the motion comes in two parts. Uh, one, motion for approval of the request to rezone the property from RA two to PUD. And two, motion for approval of the preliminary PUD plan, subject to compliance with the recommendations of the Engineering Division.
Thank you, Eric. Um, I'm assuming before we move forward with any kind of motion or discussion between the commission members, I guess I'll ask the applicants tonight if they've been made aware, obviously tonight or any time in the past, about the, uh, issues that the, uh, Engineering Department has brought up, and are you willing to accept those conditions?
I'll say that we've been aware of the issues and...
Please step up.
We have been aware, been made aware of the issues with the stormwater and will, uh, definitely be, uh, willing to discuss those with the city.
Thank you. Okay. Staff members have any, uh, commission members, excuse me, have any thing they would like to discuss before we move forward? Seeing none, I'd be interested in, uh, a motion tonight, and, uh, Eric, I believe you would like to have two motions. Are you wanting to do them as one or separately?
Uh, separately.
Okay.
Thank you.
Move to approve the request to rezone the property from RA two to PUD.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Uh, we need another motion for the preliminary PUD plan if...
Move to approve the preliminary PUD plan, subject to compliance with the recommendations of the Engineering Division.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. Both motions carry. Uh, once again, with this case, I would like, uh, to let the applicants know that we recommend our approvals to the city council, and I'm sure staff will get with you on those, uh, dates and times. Okay. Um, with that, I will go to Eric for miscellaneous reports.
No miscellaneous reports. But we do have other business.
Other business, then?
Um, I believe that you all have a, a handout passed out to you, uh, before the meeting, uh, regarding the, uh, zoning, uh, zoning code amendments that, that we're putting forward for, for discussion at this point. Uh, there were seven of them that were discussed at the last meeting. Uh, we're actually, uh, putting forward, uh, only five of them, uh, tonight, uh, with a, a, a recommendation to, um, uh, allow us to, to go ahead and notice them up for, um, for, uh, official adoption by the planning zoning commission at the next meeting. Uh, as with any amendments to the zoning code standard, uh, public notification procedures are, uh, followed, uh, essentially, uh, publif- pub- publicizing the, uh, the notices in the newspaper and on our website, et cetera. The five items that I was going to address, uh, tonight are the fences, garage size, outdoor lighting, uh, the authorized land uses in zoning districts, and the parking standards. Uh, number three and number six, the buffer yard and telecommunications towers are, are being held off, uh, hopefully until next month. Uh, there's, uh, quite a bit of paper there in the handout, so, uh, quite a bit of reading material. Uh, each of the five items, I've included the, the cover sheet that was, uh, presented to you last month. It kinda gives a, an overview of the issue, examples from other cities, and our recommendation on the matter. Um, after the, the cover sheet is, um, the actual legal language, uh, that, that we are developing. It's still a draft at this point, um, but, uh, is the, the language that we'd actually propose for, uh, the, the zoning code amendment. So, for the first item, fences. Uh, again, our recommendation, uh, on the matter was essentially to establish design standards for fences. Uh, there's been a problem in our community in the past that we have no design standards for fences. Uh, what we're recommending is, uh, requirements that fence- fences be constructed in a workmanship-like manner, that no more than two different types of fencing materials be, be permitted, uh, that no fence, uh, be made of cloth, canvas, sheet metal, or other like material, and, uh, that the finish... I'm sorry, the finished side of the fence face outward so that any posts on, on, uh, uh, fences be, be facing in toward the, the, the property. Uh, also an allowance for, uh, residential double-frontage lots, uh, to have, uh, fences in their backyard, um, up against the, the, the road that, that is their backyard. A double-frontage lot is, is a lot where, uh, uh, roads front on the property on two si- um, on, on opposite sides, with the house facing one direction and the person's backyard facing another road. Um, currently, they're only allowed a four-foot tall fence, whereas other people are allowed a, a six-foot tall fence in their backyard. On the back of that page is the, the, again, the actual, uh, legal language, uh, that we'd be proposing for the zoning code amendment. Are there any questions on fences?
I have a quick question, Eric. Um, and I know we've talked about this before in other meetings and other matters, but not, I guess, trying to help city staff, is there ever been a definition of workmanship-like manner? I think that can get, you know, depending on the abilities of the craftsman who's putting up the fence, they may say it's really good, when you may look at it and say it's really bad or vice versa. So, has there ever been, or do you know of any kind of definitions or standards? Or is it going to be that three people from the construction industry go out together and that two of them have to agree that it's workmanship quality and something like that, and we have a vote? Do you, do either of one of you know of something like that? I just, I agree with the standard. I appreciate your thoughts there, but I'm trying to make sure that we don't put ourselves into a box and have problems.
Yeah. Uh, that, that language was actually taken from, uh, from, uh, an exam, you know, from another code, from, from another city. Uh, I agree that, that it is, is somewhat loose. It does give a little bit of, um, yeah, how do I put it? A strength for, for code enforcers and, and building regulations officials to, um, you know, at least apply a little bit of professionalism toward putting up a fence. I think, uh, that, that it may be hard to define workmanship, but it's pretty easy to spot non-workmanship manner. Uh, in other words, fences that, that are, are thrown up, that, that are obviously not, not, uh, constructed to any type of...
So you think at this point, you guys feel comfortable with the language and...
Uh, the language still is a draft, and, uh, I'm still working with the legal department on, on that. Uh, certainly if that, if, if that is an item of legal concern, we can, uh, get it addressed.
Well, maybe in Drew's new capacity, he can come up with something really great for us. Thank you, Eric.
Eric, don't we already have some similar language to that in the code on, I think it's on signage? Isn't there, isn't there some, already some language in there about?
I, I would have to look it up, um, uh, not, not off the top of my head that, um, that I know of, but it could be there.
Yeah, I thought we had, or, okay. Uh, well, I think it was in the, in the site barriers for, for dumpsters. We included, uh, some statement there about it had to be in, in good repair or something along...
Yeah, I think so.
Some language that we might already have.
The, the proposal for double-frontage lots with, uh, streets in the rear of the property, this will change it to allow privacy fences up to six feet tall?
Yes, as long as they're set back ten feet from the property line. Uh, putting a six-foot tall fence right up on the property line in, in a lot of cases would just, uh, stand out.
Sure.
So, that, that's what the proposal is, yeah.
Eric, I know that, I personally don't know any properties in town where houses, say you have double-frontage, two roads paralleling. I don't particularly know any houses that flip-flop where one neighbor faces this road, the other neighbor faces the other road. So then if you had someone with, wanting to put a fence in their rear yard, which, obviously the house next door, that would be adjacent to their front yard, how, if that would happen, do you know how that would be addressed? Does this address that?
Uh, I, I think it does. Um, there, there are some examples of that, um, that, that I could, I could certainly point to. Uh, us- most of them are in old town where, uh, there used to be a house there, and it's been demolished and a lot acquired by the, the person who, who backed up against it so that they have a, a larger backyard. And so their backyard is, is squeezed in between two houses on the, you know, on the opposite street. Uh, if you look in the, in the language, uh, the, the stipulation is that the, the fence be either set back ten feet from the, from the ri- right-of-way line or with the established build line of the street, whichever is greater. Uh, the, the purpose there being is if there is a, a row of houses on the street, that the fence would have to, at a minimum, you know, not be closer to the street than that, that build line.
Okay. Or staff at this point regarding fences? Thank you, Eric.
Hey, the second item was detached garages. Uh, again, the, the issue there was that, uh, many people are wanting to construct garages larger than, uh, what is permitted by the current code. Uh, the current code, uh, essentially maxes out garage size at one-thousand square feet. Uh, the recommendation is for large properties, um, consisting of, of about a half acre or an acre, uh, depending to, to have a, a, a larger garage. Um, the discussion last month was for houses of a half of an acre be allowed twelve-hundred-and-fifty square feet and houses, I'm sorry, houses with lots of one acre to have fifteen-hundred square feet. Again, the first page is, is the handout from last month. If you look on the back of it is the, the legal language. Uh, changed it around a little bit to, to let it match up with, um, kinda the format of our existing code, which is based on square footages. Uh, and, uh, struck out, uh, uh, the, basically the current language, and, and in its place established a, a chart, uh, showing, uh, lot size and what the maximum garage size would be for, you know, depending on your lot size. So it's very easy for a person to, to look at the chart and determine the maximum size of garage that they can have. Uh, rather than using the half acre and acre numbers, we switched over to square footage numbers.
But would those be total square footage rather than, so if someone, say, had a two-car attached garage and decided they wanted to add another garage at a later point, they, they couldn't exceed those maximums? Is that correct?
No, it's not total. No, in that case, uh, believe it or not, doesn't come up too awful much. Uh, occasionally, there's, there's someone that wants to, wants to build a second garage. Usually it's right next to their first garage. Uh, sometimes it's, it's a second garage... Uh, sometimes it's, it's a second garage because the first garage is an older one that, you know, barely, you know, qualifies as a modern garage to begin with. Um, now, there is a language, uh, within here and, and it's all on this sheet. Or maybe it's not. Uh, there is language in the code that does not allow the, uh, total square footage of all accessory structures to be larger than the, than the house, than the primary structure. And, and so, and, uh, that's, that's in the current code. So, uh, even if they did have multiple structures, be it a poolhouse, a garage and a storage building or something, uh, once they're all totaled up, they, they cannot be larger than the house. Are there any questions regarding garages? The next item is outdoor lighting. Uh, the, the issue here, there, there's actually basically two issues. One is, uh, there's certain cases where, uh, outdoor lighting seems, seem uh, a higher level of outdoor lighting than what's permitted in the current code seems to be appropriate. Uh, specifically for vehicle sales lots and underneath, uh, canopies, be it, uh, gas station canopies or, or bank, drive-through canopies, et cetera. Uh, the proposal, oh, I'm sorry, that, that's the first issue. The second issue is that, uh, large parking lots, uh, uh, tend to put off a lot of glare and we've got a, a number of complaints from, from, uh, citizens, uh, in that regard. Uh, large parking lots putting off glare, uh, through all, uh, the, the wee hours of the night. And doing a little bit of research on that subject, found that, uh, there are several cities who, uh, uh, basically require large parking lots to, to shut off half of their lights or reduce the intensity by half, uh, during the, the late nighttime hours. Uh, so the, the proposal is to address both of those items at the same time. Uh, to, uh, allow, um, up to ten-foot candles underneath, uh, canopies and for, and for vehicle sales lots. Uh, the, the current maximum is, uh, for example, for the C-two district is four-foot candles. Uh, a, a good example of ten-foot candles is underneath the, the Hy-Vee, uh, gas station canopy. Uh, they, they happen to have ten underneath that canopy. And then also at the same time, uh, uh, establish a requirement for, uh, parking lots that have, uh, four light poles or more to, uh, uh, be installed so that they can shut off half of their lights, uh, or reduce them in intensity by half after eleven P.M. And, uh, that can be kind of a complicated topic, but, uh, certainly dealing with foot candles and lighting levels. Um, I'd certainly be happy to answer any questions if, if you have any on that matter.
Just, just real quickly, in an instance like you're talking, mentioned where you've had complaints about existing. I assume for existing, uh, facilities, it would be the same thing as, as with the grandfather clause in, in buildings that they wouldn't be required to meet the current standards unless, or there'll be some wording they'll address, that they'd have to be either replaced or if they were replaced, they'd have to meet the current standards or something to that effect?
Yeah, as, as the zoning code works, they would be grandfathered in. Um, I think that, that some of them already do, you know, or have their lights set up and, you know, with that ability to shut half of them off, some of the, some of the really large developments. Um, you know, certainly probably not all of them. Um, but, uh, uh, we, we often get into discussions with, uh, some, some of the larger developments, uh, in terms of, uh, uh, trying to, to address complaints, you know, on, on their lights being too bright or, or on all, all hours of the night. And this would give us a little bit more, uh, guidance in terms of what the best practice is, even though they're grandfathered in.
And, and just out of curiosity, would, would it go with the, the requirement that the new, uh, re- regulations be met come into play after a certain amount? Let's say they had five light poles, but only one had to be replaced. Would they be able to replace that one pole the way it had been or would they have to meet the new standards with them? Or is it just for the entire property?
Well, it's, it's kind of a gray area there. Uh, certainly if, if, if there is one pole that, that got, you know, needed to be replaced for maintenance purposes, more than likely that would just fall under a maintenance category. If it was a case where the entire parking lot was, you know, a new lighting plan was being established and was all being removed, um, then that would, you know, in, in replace, then certainly that would fall under the new code. If it is some sort of mix of the two, um, well, it would kinda depend on the specific circumstance.
Janice, you have something?
Yeah, I'll, I can provide a little guidance on that. Um, back when the city first started, um, considering parking lot landscaping, there was a provision added in the code at that time for non-conforming parking, or for parking lots that didn't conform with the landscaping standard. A similar provision could be added in for parking lots that don't comply with these lighting standards. You could have a standard for how they could come into compliance. So that could, that could be added. And a lot of, um, I think a lot of commercial businesses are interested in reducing their lighting because of energy costs and being more responsible, um, in that area. So I think we may see some more effort toward, um, installing lighting that's more energy efficient and turning down the level of lighting when the business is closed and that kinda thing. But that is an option to add a section to address those situations that you were discussing.
On the reverse side, Janice, if, um, say, uh, we, you all showed here that Riley Chevrolet had asked for a variance, I guess, to up their wattage, you know, obviously they're building the new Toyota facility on past that. Yes, it's a commercial area, you know, it's up there kinda by itself and, you know, I don't know if it's, their request was due to, you know, issues they were having at night, but would, would this allow someone to come to the city and maybe say, can we get a temporary, um, variance or a variance, uh, until it's developed in case there were, you know, if they're, if they're at the end of- I guess what I'm saying is somebody's at the end of the street and they're just saying, we need more light to protect our property and, and the things that are there. Could, could they still get a variance out of this? Are we saying, no, this is the standards lived by? And has that avenue been looked at?
Well, they, you know, a party can always apply for a variance. Um, in some cases, there are specific standards for the board of adjustment to guide them in making that decision in the form of findings. And in others, there are not, but, um, there's always the right of a property owner to appeal a decision of any staff decision and to, to requir- request a variance.
Any other questions regarding lighting?
Yes, um, in, in the case of a, of a, of a non-conforming, uh, establishment, um, that's been grandfathered, uh, what mechanism would we have to know that they're replacing lighting? Uh, in city code enforcement, you know, people have to get building permits if they're going to be doing a certain amount of work. But some, what would stop somebody from replacing every pole on their property, they wouldn't need a building permit to do that?
Uh, typically they would need an electrical permit, yes.
They would, okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions of staff regarding lighting?
The next item is, uh, authorized land uses. Uh, there's basically five different items, uh, that we're, uh, proposing to change in the, uh, in the zoning code matrix. And, uh, on the, on the back of the page is, is the actual legal language that, that we're proposing. Uh, but the, the proposal is, uh, probably best addressed on the front of the page. Uh, to, uh, take vocational tech schools and business schools, um, and, and differentiate between sites on five acres or less and five acres or more. Um, you know, the, the typical, uh, Columbia College or, uh, uh, you know, is a, is a, is a site that is typically less than, than about five acres. And, uh, uh, permitting them outright within the C-one and C-two districts. Right now they're, uh, classified as a special exception in those districts. And then also permitting them in the, in the C-three. Or no, apologize. Uh, essentially, uh, allowing them a special exceptions in the, uh, C-three and M-one districts. And permitting them in the, in the C-two and C-one. And then, uh, print and copy shops, uh, which are, are right now are not allowed in the C-one district. Uh, even though they, they tend to, uh, be, uh, uh, retail sales and service type of, of business, uh, so allowing that. Uh, contractor and trade shops, uh, listing them as a conditional use in the C-two district. When, when they have outdoor storage, uh, there's, uh, that, that is an item that tends to come up. Uh, feel that, uh, contractor and trade shops, uh, are, are allowed in the C-two district if they have no outdoor storage right now. Uh, but if they have outdoor storage, then they're, they're essentially pushed to the, to the manufacturing districts. With the amount of, uh, C-two zoned property in our community, uh, feel that it, it, uh, deserves a little bit of flexibility there to, to allow them to locate in the C-two district as long as there's, you know, appropriate review by the, the board of adjustment through the conditional use permit process. And then, uh, motor vehicle washes, uh, currently are, you know, car washes are currently a conditional use in the C-two district. Uh, even, even though there's, there's several of them in, in our community, all in the C-two district. Uh, feel that, that they should just be permitted outright. And then dog grooming, which is an item that, that tends to come up a lot. Uh, it's, it's an item that's not specifically listed in our land use matrix. And, uh, we're proposing to list it, define it and permit it in the C-one and C-two districts. You know, again, the, the actual language is on the back page and I gotta apologize, the, the different zoning districts are not listed, uh, within the, the, the exhibit that's shown in that ordinance. Uh, again, it's just a draft. Um, but at the, uh, toward the bottom of the page and then on to the next page is, uh, the proposed definition for a dog groomer, uh, which is, was taken, uh, from a combination of other, uh, codes. Are there any questions regarding the, the changes to the land use matrix? Okay. Uh, the final item?
Actually, I did. Um, the, on the print copy shop, how would you distinguish a print copy shop from like a, an industrial printer?
It, it is actually defined. Um, there, there is a separate category in the, in the zoning matrix for the, the industrial type of, of print.
Okay.
Uh, printing biz- or-
Okay, and dog grooming definition on, on, the, the discussion on the front, um, just talks about dog grooming, but the language in the back talks about boarding dogs. So that's kind of a, that's quite a different, um, practice.
Okay, with, with no overnight boarding.
Did I miss something here? Canine daycare for all are part of a day. And this, ah. Ah, I see, okay. Thank you.
Yes. Certainly wanted to distinguish between the, the borders and boarding is a, again, a separate item, uh, within the matrix.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions regarding land uses?
Okay, the, the final item is, is parking and basically five different items, uh, with regard to parking. Three of them fall into kinda the same category, restaurants, fast food restaurants, uh, and, uh, bars or taverns. Uh, right now they're, they're all, uh, the parking requirement for those three uses is, is based on seating. For the restaurant and the bar, it's, it's one parking space for every three seats in the, in the business. And then for the, for the fast food, uh, drive-through restaurant, it's, uh, one per four seats. And, uh, it's, it's kind of a, a poor way to, to measure a parking requirement. Um, yeah, we've had issues with it in the past. Uh, we're essentially relying on, on a business owner to tell us the number of seats and to, to keep that constant. Um, instead of relying on, on the number of seats, uh, we're proposing to switch that to a, uh, a parking requirement based on square footage of the building. Uh, one per one hundred square feet, which, uh, seems to be pretty standard, uh, given other communities. And then, uh, we do not have a, a parking requirement listed for hotels. Uh, so we're proposing to establish that as one per room, uh, plus a, a requirement for other uses that are attached to the hotel, be it, you know, a restaurant or something to that effect, uh, to have a seventy-five percent of the required parking for that other use. Typically restaurants attached to hotels rely a lot of their business on the, the customers of the hotel. And then banks are also not listed in the parking requirement. And we're proposing a parking requirement of, of one per three hundred square foot, again, based on, uh, research done with other communities. And then the, the very back page is the, the actual language, uh, for that. And is, uh, essentially an excerpt out of the parking requirement, uh, table of the zoning code showing the proposed changes.
Eric, how do you feel that these requirements are going to affect our existing businesses and the community? I'm sure that's a pretty broad question, but, um, obviously the ones that don't comply will become non-conforming. Then I'm assuming as long as they don't expand their building structure, they can remodel. Use the example, McDonald's comes in and tells Missouri Boulevard that they've gotta come up with their newest colors and scheme and all that. So as long as that building wouldn't expand in size, I'm assuming they'd still be grandfathered and be okay to do that kinda, uh, renovation?
That's correct.
Do you, do you feel that what we're proposing is, obviously you feel it's adequate for the, for the city to provide off-street parking? What do you think it's going to do to our existing businesses that are out there in these categories? Are we creating a fifty percent non-conforming? I mean, it's, I'm sure it's kind of a guess at this point, but-
Well, just kinda generally speaking, if, if there's a business out there that's real tight on their parking and is looking at expanding their, their building, more than likely they're gonna need more parking anyway. Be it measured under the current code or the new code or just as a, as a practical business, uh, type of requirement, providing enough, you know, parking for your customers. Um, are there businesses out there that, that would become non-conforming? Uh, most certainly yes. Uh, with, uh, a, a parking requirement based on seating, um, you know, switching over to the square footage. I'm, you know, I'm sure that there's several that, that are going to, to fall into that non-conforming category.
I think it's, personally, putting my planner hat back on from years ago, um, I think it's good that you're defining it down to square footages. Because I agree that seats and tables and all that can vary so much. Um, and I know a lot of times we relied on building codes and/or the fire department to say this is the seating capacity, but we all know that, you know, that's pretty hard to regulate. So I think it really gives, uh, staff an opportunity to really look at a proposed use and make sure that we're gonna have what we hope is an adequate amount of parking. So I, I like, I like this matrix. Any other comments or questions for staff on, uh, parking?
If it's based on square footage, uh, for example, if, if there was a building that had a restaurant and let's say, uh, majority of it was for storage, let's say the building was huge, but only like, say, the front part was used for the actual restaurant space, seating area, would, would there be a variance there or would it still be based on the square footage? I don't know what, I'm kinda just coming up with a possibility.
For, uh, for the mixed-use types of, of buildings, you know, be it, uh, a restaurant that has a retail component, for example, we do divide those, uh, in terms of looking at the square footage of retail and calculating that parking, parking requirement separately from the, the, well, in this case, the square footage of the restaurant. And then, uh, you know, combine those, those two numbers to come up with a total parking requirement. So, uh, certainly if, um, if there's a, a large building where only a small portion is, is a restaurant and the rest is, you know, a warehouse, be it associated with restaurant use or not, then, I mean, it is, you know, i- i- in, in certain circumstances, I mean, it's kind of a broad statement, but it is separated in terms of the parking requirement that, that's applied to it. Now, if the restaurant then, you know, decides to expand within that and, and take up more space, then, well, you know, even under their current code- Well, you know, even under their current code, that they'd be required to to uh show that they have adequate parking to support that.
Eric, uh some some restaurants and bars uh have have a good bit of outside seating, sometimes our decks, how how is that, how would that be handled?
The uh the outdoor area would would need to be calculated uh in terms of the the square footage as well. So.
Any other questions for staff? Eric, do you need anything from us at this point, or is this more for us to go back and read through and then we'll discuss it uh again further, or where where are we at with this?
Uh it's certainly um like any comments that you may have. Um uh. What we're requesting at this point is uh. Uh approval to to move forward and and notice it up in in the standard public notification format and bring it before you for these five items. Uh next month in a public hearing format, so that it can be voted on and brought on to the to the city council for adoption.
Do you need a motion this evening from us with a vote, or what are you looking for?
I think a motion with a vote would uh.
Okay.
Be appreciated.
Okay. Um with that comment, does any of the commissioners have? Comments or questions and? If not, would anyone like to provide a motion?
I would move that uh we bring. These items forward for a public hearing at our next meeting, as already discussed.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any other comments from commissioners before we vote? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. Um, any other business or items this evening from anyone? We do have one, yes, sir.
Just a quick comment, uh Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, on behalf of the mayor and my fellow city councilman and and myself. Um, we'd just like to say thank you for your willingness to to serve on this commission. Um, thank you is probably not said often enough to the folks who do serve on our boards and commissions, and it is greatly appreciated. Your willingness to serve signals your dedication not only to this community, but to the citizens that we serve. I'm sure that your schedules could be filled with a lot of other things during this time and the time that you spend in. Reading through your packet material and preparing for these meetings, so. Um, thank you to you, each of you individually and to your families uh for your willingness to serve on this committee. Thanks.
Thanks, sir. I will declare the meeting adjourned.